...line all the way to Santa Monica, stretching the red line to Burbank Airport and creating a train line from Sepulveda Boulevard in the San Fernando Valley to LAX. But will voters approve of yet another transportation tax? The last one, Measure R, passed in 2008, but since then, interest in metro ridership has dropped, according to the LA Times. Still, Mayor Garcetti says investments in public transit will reduce LA's infamous traffic and more.
More options for some people to get out of their cars means we all flow more quickly. So this is jobs, and this is a long-term commitment.
An investment for future generations. For LA This Week, I'm Gil Reyes.
The tax proposal could fund metro projects through the year 2057. And Metro isn't only looking to improve public transit, but it's also hoping to do so with the environment in mind. Anna Marcos takes us inside the new operations facility downtown.
LA has made a name for itself with its green and earth-friendly buses. Now its bus maintenance operations have also gone green with the grand opening of Metro's operations and maintenance facility.
We're on to something. We're on to something good. We're on to something green. We're on to something sustainable.
It's our first new ground-up bus operations and maintenance facility built by Metro since 1984. Think back to 1984. That's when we had the Olympics here last, when the first Mac came out from Apple. So it's been a while.
But the facility has made up for lost time. Everything here is cutting-edge: the newer, safer apparatus, the skylights and solar panels, a water recycling program in Cistern that collects rainwater, and a rooftop garden that reduces the urban heat island effect.
And the rooftop garden is available to employees. It'll help reduce the cooling load on the building, which again saves us operating dollars.
Right across the way is our county jail. We are going to be recycling the water from the county jail here. And that's hundreds of thousands of gallons of water that will be recycled and used.
The blue apparatus is a lift designed to raise maintenance personnel to the height of the roof of the buses so they can do repairs. This eliminates the need for a ladder.
Almost half the money for the $120 million project came from the federal government.
And across the country, more Americans today are traveling by bus than any other form of transit, and that is why continued investments in facilities like Division 13 are so critical.
The building's solar panels will provide 10% of all its power needs, and that puts LA's transportation system on the road to a more sustainable future. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The facility can accommodate more than 200 buses needing repair and maintenance. Though jobs and the economy are in an upswing, you wouldn't know it in parts of South LA. But as Gil Reyes reports, help has arrived in pockets where unemployment is the worst.
New hope for job seekers in southeast Los Angeles and surrounding areas.
Allow us to help you help yourselves and get back in the workforce.
The second of two work source portals opens on Slosson Avenue and Crocker Street, where the old Weber Bread Factory used to be. This portal has free computer access for job searching, also full-time staff to help you build resumes, practice interviews, and more.
A one-stop shop where folks can get help for housing, healthcare, childcare, and employment. See, the old days where we used to say, "I'm sorry, if you have five problems, here's five addresses." We hope those are over.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and company explain the difference between traditional work source centers and work source portals like this one. Portals have more resources for job seekers and are placed in areas where unemployment is the worst.
The ninth district, I have to acknowledge, has the highest rate of poverty and unemployment in our city. That's why this resource here is so important.
Portals also partner with nonprofits like HOPICs to help provide second chances for the formerly incarcerated. They also focus on career training in high-demand industries.
Today, we focus on information technology, hospitality and tourism, healthcare, construction utilities, and green energy, financial services.
To help you find not just a job, but a career. In southeast LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The city's other work source portal is located on South Vermont Avenue in South LA. Mayor Garcetti says the city is investing nearly $2.5 million in new job training programs, benefiting the homeless, foster youth, and transgenders. While LAX is jumping into the 21st century with a multi-billion-dollar overhaul that could change transportation and air travel as we know it in LA. Hundreds came out to hear about the landside access modernization plan from city leaders and to find out how they can take part. Anna Marcos takes us there.
The plan is to turn LAX into a jewel of global first-class travel. City leaders unveiled the $8.5 billion landside access modernization program to a full house.
Our goal is to fix the traffic gridlock coming in and out of the airport, to connect to public transportation, and to do it in a sustainable and responsible way.
I imagine at some point, everybody in this crowd has gone through Los Angeles International Airport and bemoaned its condition and has wondered why we can't do better.
Well, city leaders and airport commissioners are now doing better. Among the highlights of the plan: a consolidated center for all rental cars, two intermodal transportation facilities, an automated people mover that will move passengers through the entire airport and to and from the transportation facilities, and finally, a metro rail connection to the airport.
This project is not only important, but it will be transformative, not just for the airport, not just for people who use the airport, but for the city of Los Angeles.
The design and bidding process will be different from the status quo as well. 900 people came to hear the announcement: executives, contractors, suppliers, and vendors, all looking for a piece of the pie when this mega-construction project starts. And city leaders asked them to come up with their own ideas and, if picked, to design, create, finance, and maintain the projects, instead of them bidding on a project the city came up with.
We want Los Angeles to be known as a hotbed of innovation. All we ask of you is to be bold, is to think outside the proverbial box. Bring us something better, bring us something faster, bring us something more inventive, something more environmentally sensitive.
The first phase of the project, the people mover and the consolidated car rental center, is expected to be ready by 2023. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information, visit connectinglax.com. While Los Angeles may have seen some recent rain, the water shortage is still on the city's priority list. Rasha Goel has more on the latest technology tool that officials hope will help with water consumption.
This gadget, called a smart water meter, is the latest tool that officials say will help monitor water consumption throughout the city.
The idea behind these smart meters is simple. By monitoring water use in real time, we will be able to help our parks cut water consumption over time.
It gives us eyes on the park's water consumption 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. That way, we can watch when there's a water, when there's a break, and they happen all the time. When there's a leak, we can immediately detect it and fix it and save millions of gallons of water.
The pilot program will bring 100 of these smart water meters to Echo Park and 27 other parks throughout the city.
The way they work is, once they're attached, these smart meters use cell towers or cell network to transmit data to a website where both the Department of Water and Power and Wrenckin Parks can monitor water usage.
We really have to look at our water supplies and really what we need to do to be sustainable as a city.
The launch of the pilot program comes as the city considers a citywide water rate increase proposed by the LA DWP. The increase will help Los Angeles invest in critically needed water infrastructure, develop more local water supplies, and expand water conservation efforts. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Recreation and Parks Department reported a 26% reduction in water use last year, which is enough water to serve 8,000 LA households for a year. While LA's working poor are about to get a boost when it comes to affordable housing as city leaders break ground on the Meridian Apartment Project. Anna Marcos takes us to the groundbreaking.
There's 100 reasons to cheer as city leaders break ground on the future Meridian Apartments, a complex of 100 affordable units for low-income residents. The studio, one-, two-, and three-bedroom apartments will come with a computer lab, courtrooms, parking, and many social services.
With the homeless count increasing every day, and I think if you just go around the corner, you'll see all the tents that are there, that really affordable housing is something that is so critical.
So what would rents go for here? Well, as an example, a two-bedroom apartment could go for as low as $560 a month for those with the lowest qualifying income, about $17,000 a year, while a studio apartment could go for as low as $435.
It's a working community. It's really workforce housing that we're providing here.
The housing project will be earth-friendly too, with a LEED Gold rating, and it will be near the Vermont-Beverly Metro Red Line Station, bringing another transit-centered community to LA. Still, with the need for affordable units rising, this is just a drop in the bucket.
Everyone assembled under this tent knew years ago that we had a housing crunch then, and we had a lack of affordable housing then. Now we're in crisis mode.
We're producing 100 units here, which is fantastic. The regional housing needs assessment indicated over an eight-year period, we needed to produce approximately 33,000 units citywide.
Organizers will start taking applications for the apartments in about a year. The project could be completed as early as September of 2017. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Residents, by the way, will also get a free one-year Metro Transit Pass. While paid parental leave for city employees may soon become a reality, Olympic athletes hit the streets of LA and a busy Hollywood crosswalk gets lit up. All these stories in City B. The Los Angeles City Council voted to explore the idea of offering city workers who are new parents four weeks of paid time off to allow them to bond with their children. Councilmember Paul Krikorian said that in order to be competitive with the private sector, the city needs to make sure it provides this benefit to allow young families to be able to come to work and still know they won't be neglecting their obligations to their children. Officials will analyze the economic and other implications this benefit will have on the city. City employees currently have four months of unpaid leave to bond with their children. In order to get paid during that time, some employees use a mixture of accrued paid vacation and sick leave hours, according to city officials. Los Angeles recently hosted the Women's and Men's 2016 U.S. Olympic Team Marathon Trials. Three men and three women were selected as the first batch of track-and-field athletes to qualify for the 2016 U.S. Olympic Team that will compete this summer in Brazil. Meanwhile, officials hope the trials will demonstrate that Los Angeles has what it takes to host the 2024 Olympics.
We have the strongest package, I think, in the world, not only for a city that has followed the sun and continues to chase the dreams and innovation that defined who we are, but a town that probably is home to more Olympic athletes than any place on the face of the earth.
Los Angeles City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, David Rue, and the Los Angeles Department of Transportation dedicated a newly-installed traffic signal along Hollywood Boulevard and Lyman Place, which intersects Council Districts 4 and 13.
Because, you know, pedestrian safety, public safety, doesn't know boundaries.
The flashing yellow light will serve as an enhancement to the crosswalk already in place. The installation was part of the $6 million that the Los Angeles City Council allocated for traffic signal improvement projects in fiscal years 2014 and '15. The heavily-used pedestrian crossing is the only one on the entire stretch of Hollywood from Hillhurst to Vermont. And even though it will help provide a safer crossing for those who visit and work in the commercial corridor, O'Farrell says pedestrians still need to be careful even when the lights are flashing.
We still have to watch out because there are distracted drivers now more than ever. Just because they have a flashing light doesn't mean they're even going to see it. So I want to make sure that no one has a fall sense of security, that cars won't still drive recklessly.
A community outreach program blends basketball skills with an empowering message for young students. Rasha Goel has more.
That was the message these young students from Para los Ninos Charter Elementary School received from some of the Harlem Globetrotters. First Puerto Rican Harlem Globetrotter, El Gato Melendez, Bucket Blake, who holds a Guinness World Record for most basketball underhand half-court shots in one minute, and expert dunker Hacksaw Hall came out to teach kids about the ABCs of bullying prevention.
The A in the ABCs of bullying prevention stands for action. Everybody say "action!"
Bucket Blake, who was bullied himself as a kid, shared some tips on how he was able to beat the bullies at their own game.
I kept smiling. The bullies were calling me names and telling jokes about me. Actually, some of the jokes were funny, so I started laughing at myself, and they didn't like the fact that they couldn't make me sad. But when they started to walk up on me, I'd walk away and lead them right to the nearest teacher.
This presentation was part of the Globetrotters' 90th anniversary.
Reaching to the kids is our main goal, to talk about ABCs of bullying prevention, bring out the good, possibly a message for them to use, not just in school, but also outside of school, in the community, and also at home.
Officials tell me they have a very familial atmosphere here, and the parents are very well-connected with the staff and students. And when it comes to bullying prevention, well, they try to troubleshoot the problem before it even starts.
I think oftentimes it's more about educating the parents about what bullying is. I think oftentimes we see more the word being misused. So really about educating the parents, educating the children, and what they can do to prevent bullying.
And for today, the Globetrotters hope that with their unique spin, stopping bullying for these kids will be a slam dunk. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Harlem Globetrotters continue their tour through the summer with shows in Europe and Canada. While the traffic's so bad, you want to get out of your car and walk sometimes, and Westside residents have had enough. As Gil Reyes reports, they're offering suggestions to end the gridlock on Sunset Boulevard in Brentwood.
It's not as bad on weekends, but on weekdays, get ready to scream. Traffic on Sunset Boulevard near the 405 freeway in Brentwood.
It's a soul-sucking experience for folks who live here. It can take folks over an hour to go a mile, and what we're looking for is a bunch of small solutions that together can add up to some relief.
Westside Councilman Mike Bonin hosted this community gathering that drew some 200 Brentwood-area residents. Among their tips to alleviate congestion: changing the timing on traffic signals, limiting turns, and activating tolls during peak hours. This is for a stretch of sunset between Kenter Avenue and the 405. And here's one more suggestion: adding more housing on the west side.
As long as people work on the west side and don't live on the west side because there's not enough housing for the workers, I think you've got a traffic problem. There's just, we see in Brentwood, people drive through in the morning to get through to Santa Monica, and because that's where a lot of the office spaces have been built, and they drive out at night.
Area homeowners also say planned construction at nearby Archer School for Girls next year will only worsen things.
I grew up in LA, born and raised in LA. We love our cars, but we gotta, it's gotten to a point where we can't all fit in the same limited space to get our cars through at the same time, so we need to find alternatives. So it's biking opportu- and taking a bike down to the new train station and getting someplace, or taking a bus.
Councilman Bonin says his office is putting together a progress report based on every suggestion, and will report back to residents soon on possible implementation. For LA This Week, I'm Gil Reyes.
That stretch of sunset winds through UCLA, the Getty Center, and other upscale neighborhoods. While Boyle Heights is becoming more pedestrian-friendly thanks to a series of new traffic safety upgrades. Anita Bennett has the story.
These Boyle Heights residents have a reason to cheer: a newly-installed traffic light at the corner of Fourth and Pecan.
This is a project that came about because of some students who asked for more safety crossing the street here. Came about because of a study and some advocacy from neighborhood organizations.
The traffic light is part of a series of upgrades to improve safety during the Sixth Street Bridge construction project.
This is part of 11 improvements that are being invested as a front-end of the Sixth Street Viaduct. So two new signals, 11 new left-turn improvements.
Residents say cars often speed through the area as they enter the 101 freeway, but the new traffic light is meant to get drivers to slow down and yield to pedestrians. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
The improvements are being funded through state grants. Well, check out the latest trends in boating as the LA Boat Show sails into LA, get fired up for some hockey action on the ice, and commemorating the 50th anniversary of the Watts Rebellion. That's all in this week's Things to Do. Celebrating 60 years as the best place to see and buy boats, the LA Boat Show is coming to the Los Angeles Convention Center. This event features hands-on training workshops, marine electronics and electronics pavilion, an interactive learning center, a new float-in theater, boating skills, virtual trainer, and a kid's zone. Whether you're an expert boater or just curious, the LA Boat Show has something for everyone. The LA Convention Center Boat Show opens February 25 and runs through the 28th, on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. For more information, visit LosAngelesBoatShow.com. The Los Angeles Kings are back on the ice for the 2016 NHL season, attempting to keep the every-other-year championship pattern going. After losing 2-1 to the Buffalo Sabres last year, they're yearning for another go. Check out this fast-paced action on the ice, root for your favorite players, and get fired up for another season of hard-hitting hockey. The LA Kings will face off the Buffalo Sabres at the Los Angeles Staples Center on February 27th. For more information, visit Kings.NHL.com.
Los Angeles, California, the district called Watts. Thirty-four persons die, $40 million worth of property is destroyed, almost 4,000 are arrested.
The Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs Watts Towers Art Center campus, together with the Clayton Library and Museum, is delighted to present 50 years and "I Still Can't Breathe," remembering the 50th anniversary of the 1965 Watts Rebellion and now. On view at the Watts Towers Art Center campus and the Noah Purafoi Gallery through February 28. This one-of-a-kind exhibit presents one of the most compelling collections of socially-conscious art in California in many years. Curated by Watts Towers Art Center Campus Director Rosie Lee Hooks and artist Michael Massenberg, the show addresses highly topical themes of legal and police injustice against minority communities from the Watts Rebellion to the present. The gallery is open Wednesday through Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. and Sunday from 12:00 to 4:00. For more information, visit wattstowers.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, February 23. I want to welcome you to City Hall and to your Los Angeles City Council. These meetings are on Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscagino, Cedillo, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Weezer moves, Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonin moves, Bloomingfield seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Why don't we rise? We'll be led today by Mr. Paul Corretts and our flag salute.
Please place your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give our young folk a round of applause. We're going to invite you every day so that you guys can say the pledge. You did it so, so wonderfully. That brings us where? And again, Mr. Corretts, thank you. Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue 1S and 1Z for three weeks to March 15th.
Okay, without objection, that'd be the order.
Further, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed: 1B, G, H, K, M, and T, as the liens have been paid in full. Additionally, the department recommends that lien amounts be reduced on 1J to $342 and 1X to $2,523.20, and that 1X be continued to March 15th, 2016.
Okay, so without objection, that'd be the order. Mr. Bonin.
1W for 30 days, please.
1W, 30 days, that means March 23rd. Madam Clerk, okay, continue.
Item...
Mr. Corretts, I'm sorry, sir.
I think I'd like to call item 1A B special.
Without objection. Back to you, Madam Clerk.
Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing, and there are cards.
Okay, let's move on.
Items 2 through 28 are items for which public hearings have been held.
It's my understanding that there's a request made that we hold 2 and 4, 2 through 4, for a few moments. Mr. Weezer?
21 and 28 special, please.
21 and 28. Mr. Corretts?
22 special.
22 special for Mr. Corretts. Members, any other specials? I do not see any. Let us prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That brings us where?
Items 29 through 37 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Cards?
Cards on 29, 30, 31, 32, and 34.
Okay, let's hold those items. Let us vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Okay, now, members, before we move forward, is anyone prepared to introduce? It looks like we have several special visitors today. I don't know whose districts they're from, but why don't we find out so we can recognize the young people that are, that are with us? Mr. Sadio, are you ready to begin? Or you need a few moments, or?
At your pleasure, sir.
So why don't we start with Mr. Sadio's presentation? Okay, I'm told we need to reconsider item 14, so we're going to vote on reconsideration on item 14. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now what we want to do, we want to hold that item, and I will defer to Mr. Sadio. The floor is yours.
Okay. Rise and shine, everybody. This is for the young people. We've got an incredible amount of young people here with us. You know, you hire an artist on your staff and, you know, all of a sudden, your office looks like an art gallery. You hire a singer as your receptionist, and you get songs when you walk into my office. But if you hire an engineer, you start with Engineers Day. First, an acknowledgement, then a day, then it becomes a week. Now we're moving towards a month. And so we are here for Engineers Week, Mr. President. It's our third annual Engineers Week. It actually started in 1951 to celebrate the contributions that engineers make into our daily lives. And as you'll hear from them, there's hardly anything that we do that doesn't involve engineers and engineering. And so we are here, as I said, as a product of my staff and their initiative. We had a great week last year, but this program just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger each year. Today, I'm joined by Kevin James, the Bureau of Engineers, members of the American Society of Civil Engineers, and as you noted, our special guest. We have 200 young geeks with us. And, you know, you and I don't look like it, but you and I are geeks also. And so we are very happy to have Castalar Elementary School, Los Feliz Arts Elementary School, Taper Elementary School, Ninth Street Elementary, all representing CD 1, CD 15, and CD 14. The week is filled with a whole range of activities.
Wait, wait a minute, Mr. Sadio. Let's give these young people a round of applause so that they know that they're really welcome. I want you guys to look at yourself on television. You're looking sharp. Okay, now we can... Okay, all right. Now we can sit down. Now we can sit down. No more sugar. Sit down, and now, Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
Now you can see how this week started off, right?
It's a good week.
Sounds like my, looked like my staff meeting there for a second. So you know STEM is a very serious, serious matter for us, science, technology, engineering, mathematics. If we're going to compete in the global economy, this is essential. And so this is a way of making, being a geek popular, having these weeks, having these opportunities. Of course, I want to thank my colleagues and Chair of the Public Works Committee, Councilmember Joe Buscaino, his committee, the Board of Public Works. A special thanks to the American Society of Civil Engineers. And let me begin by giving a certificate. Where are they? Okay. So this goes to Phil Davis, the American Society of Civil Engineers. Applause, applause, applause. Thank you. Obviously, someone who doesn't need an introduction deserves one nonetheless. One of my favorite Bruins, one of my favorite constituents, the Honorable Dr. Gary Lee Moore. Nope, he's just going to give a speech. There's a real...
Very nice. This is great.
Like that tie, Gary.
Okay, you know what, Mr. Sadio? Gary, I've got a couple of members on the queue. Why don't I defer to them first, starting with Mr. Curran Price? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank my colleague, Mr. Sadio, for once again bringing this important event forward, highlighting the importance of engineering, careers in engineering. I want to thank Kevin James from the board and our own engineer, Gary Moore, appreciate you, and the American Society of Civil Engineers. Again, just recognizing the importance of diversity, of access, of career opportunities, of training. Just so important. I'm proud that two high schools from the Ninth District are going to be participating. Synergy Academy, is Synergy in the house? Not yet. And the Alliance College Academy. And so we're excited about their involvement, their participation, and we look forward to many more years of this and really growing our own crop of engineers to step up to the plate and to participate in creating the kind of environment that's going to be so important for us to live, to work, and to play in our city. So again, thank you all for your support.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. What a great presentation. You know, as we look at the future of this country and the types of skills that our young people will need, STEM is at the forefront of that. And we, as a nation, are competing as strong as we did in the past in these fields. And if you look at all USD and the types of students that are being educated, mostly minority students, it's imperative that we continue to support them in these fields so that we continue to have the skills and talents necessary for the future of this country. So congratulations to you all. I particularly want to give a big shout-out to Ninth Street Elementary School, a great school here in downtown Los Angeles. The administration there is focused on the STEM and other areas. And stand up again, students, and let's give you a big round of applause for all the work you do. And welcome to City Hall. Everywhere you look, there's a sign of an engineer. This building was designed by Parkinson and other architects that needed an engineering background to get this beautiful building done. Congratulations to you all, to all of you.
Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Sadio, for another successful Engineer Week here in the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank you, Gil, and your staff for working with my team, specifically Sergio. Sergio's right here. Thank you so much for your leadership and getting all of our schools together. This week, we will host Taper Avenue in San Pedro. Taper Tigers are here today. Tomorrow, we'll welcome Gulf Avenue, Dana Middle School, and Wilmington Middle School. And what we're doing here is exposing our kids to the career of engineering and knowing that engineers design the basic infrastructure, underlying facilities and structures that we rely on to conduct our daily business today and raise our family and pursue our dreams. The roadwork that we rely on to drive to work, to the grocery store, the underground pipes that bring fresh water to our kitchens, the hydroelectric dam that generates electricity, reservoirs, and pumps to provide drinkable water, and sewage treatment plants that treat waste water. Our safety depends on our infrastructure as well. And what we're doing this week is giving our kids in the city of Los Angeles an opportunity to share the types of professions that are exposed in engineering work throughout the region. And cities like Los Angeles age, and it's even more important than ever that we train the next generation of engineers that will repair, expand, and improve our vital civil infrastructure. So thank you again, Gil, happy to partner with you and to our Public Works family that stand before us. Thank you for making the time for our future generations. So thank you very much and appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
All right, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to acknowledge you, Mr. Sadio, for bringing this forward, Bureau of Engineering. We, my office works so closely with you all the time, whether it's the Walk of Fame, and Kevin James heads a committee to ensure the maintenance and future and repairs of the Walk of Fame in Hollywood. Also, the Los Angeles River, Gary Lee Moore, Deborah Weintraub, Alfred Mata. We go back, we go way back on so many projects, whether it's Echo Park Lake. I've worked with most every one of you on one project or another. But I also want to highlight the fact that Deborah Weintraub was the interim Bureau of Engineering city engineer and how you really provided such an example for women who want to go into engineering and how you worked with the STEM Academy in Hollywood with the young ladies who are studying to be engineers there and how the whole world of engineering, the profession, is open for women. We need more women engineers. And I look forward to the day, yes. We need to send the signal far and wide that no occupation is out of reach for anyone, no matter what gender you are. And I think that's a really important message of this week and all the work that you do. So thank you and congratulations, and have a great week.
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to echo my colleagues' thanks to all of our engineers who make everything work in this city, make transportation work, make our utilities work, make sure that we have a clean and safe place for our constituents to live. So thank you all very much for your commitment to the people that live in this city. But I also want to take a minute just to talk to the young people who are here because STEM and STEAM is important to prepare these young students for the jobs of the 21st century and for the kind of jobs that this city can still be dominant in the world in producing. But I want to talk to the kids directly because they're not thinking so much about jobs right now. It's a little too early for that. So I want to tell you something else. This building that you're sitting in, this beautiful building, look around at it and realize that this building was designed about 100 years ago by people just like you. Somebody who sat down with a pen and a paper and said, "I've got an idea for how we can build a city hall for the city of Los Angeles." And the architect for this building was, in fact, an immigrant to the United States who decided that he wanted to make a mark in the world. And he designed this incredible building that you're sitting in right now. So the point of this is that if you pursue engineering, if you pursue the sciences and technology fields in your life, not only will you get a good job, but you'll leave a legacy. You will leave something that people 100 years ago will still be talking about. You'll be able to shape the world that you live in, not just go through that world, but shape it and change it in ways that people will still be marveling at generations to come. When your grandkids are sitting in this room, receiving this recognition, people will still be talking about the things that you did if you pursue this and if you continue it. So I encourage you all to continue to follow your dreams, and you can really make them happen. So thank you, Mr. Sadio, for bringing all these young people in.
Back to you. Gary, you want to say a few words?
Just real briefly. It's a real honor to be here today to represent the engineers that work for the city of Los Angeles. I definitely want to thank Councilman Sadio and the entire council for this recognition here today. You know, it is so much about the young people and reaching out to these people in the communities. One of the things that excites us about hiring is hiring people that live in the city of Los Angeles. So we're very hopeful that with these 200 students, there's some future engineers and architects and scientists out there that will go to school, come back, and then work for the city of L.A. Because there's no better steward of the city than the local resident. And so we're so proud to be here, and we want to thank, once again, Councilman Sadio and the entire council for this recognition and recognizing the importance of infrastructure and what a difference it makes. Thank you very much.
Finally, let me bring up the president of our Public Works, Kevin James.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. It's my pleasure to be here today. It's great to partner with everyone across the city to focus on Engineers Week. You know, I'm the grandson of a civil engineer who spent his entire 40-year career with the U.S. Army Corps, so always trying to steer me in the direction of engineering. He would be happy today that this is about as close as I got. But, you know, after practicing law for so many years, my message to the young people, to echo a bit what Councilman Krikorian said, engineers touch every aspect of your life. And as you can tell from the energy in the room, from the young people here today, our future in engineering is incredibly bright. We're thrilled tomorrow, we'll host the middle school students at the Board of Public Works tomorrow, and we'll be announcing, of course, the winner of the engineering competition, which every year Gary Lee Moore and Deborah Weintraub are standing in the wings with their business cards, waiting to recruit those students for early jobs and internships. So thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the council members for the recognition. We look forward to a very exciting week that is, of course, designed intentionally to be right near George Washington's birthday. He was, of course, a military engineer. So engineering is deep, deep in our history and will be the key part of our future. Thank you, sir.
Let's give him one more round of applause.
Finally, for all the members in the audience, there is a magazine that's been put out, Engineers Week 2016, and it has all the activities, the Elementary School Day, Middle School Day, Women's Day, High School Day, all the activities that will be part of Engineers Week here in the city of Los Angeles. I'm very proud, I want to thank my staff again, Sergio Infanzon, who is an engineer by training, for his commitment and leadership to do this. I think this really bodes well for the city of Los Angeles. I think this really bodes well for the city of Los Angeles to encourage this type of education early on with young people, to advocate for it and to validate it, so that they know that there are people who want them to continue in their STEM and STEAM work. Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Debbie, and thank you, Freddie, and my entire team for making this happen. And thank you for all the other offices who are collaborating with us to make this a big success. So a big thank you, Mr. President, and to everyone else. Thank you all.
Thank you. Let's give him one more round of applause. So if we could please clear the center aisle.
Can we take up items two, three, and four now, Mr. President?
Yes. Before we go to our next presentation, let's take up items two through four. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we approve the recommendations of the North Valley Area Planning Commission for items two, three, and four.
Okay. So no one on the queue on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Mr. Coretts? Or would Mr. Coretts, would you like for me to... Paul, would you like for me to take up an item or so while the kids are leaving, or you want to just go have at it? Mr. Weezer, you want to quickly take up, I think it's item 28, while our young people are exiting?
Yes, Mr. President. This item simply is asking for a report back to accept EBT at our farmers, at our city-certified farmers' markets. And I thought it was worthwhile to bring to everyone's attention, as this report is being drawn up, any input anyone would want to provide, please do speak to our CAO or CLA. It's important that, as people look to find fresh fruits and vegetables in their local communities...
Are you sure you're on 28?
Is that...
Or you want...
Which one was that, Mr. President? Oh, it's Stanley Hirsch. Yes. That was 21 I was speaking to. So we could take 21 up right now. It's a quick one. Let's do 21.
All right. So let's vote on 21.
And finally, it's just asking for a report back. Important for people to have access to fresh fruits and vegetables in the local communities. Farmers' markets, it's one way that we're doing it throughout the city, so ask for an A vote on this and ask for any input you have to please contact people who are drafting up the report. 21, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, let's go. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
And now let's take up 28. You're on a roll, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And briefly, I'd like to please welcome the Hirsch family who is here. Where are you? Back there, welcome.
Let's give him a round of applause.
And if I could find my notes on that, here we go. And I'm very excited to have this in front of us today. Mr. Hirsch is a longtime resident of the city of Los Angeles that did much to support the fashion district here in downtown Los Angeles. And as you know, the fashion industry in the city of LA is a very important component of our economy here. This motion before us today will rename the intersection of Ninth and Los Angeles in honor of the great Stanley Hirsch. Mr. Hirsch was a prominent landowner and real estate investor, a valuable garment manufacturer, and a notable philanthropist. He was truly one of the forefathers of downtown Los Angeles. He was known for his contributions to the Jewish and political causes, and unfortunately passed away after a very long battle with brain cancer. He was a great man of great integrity and passion. He was a generous person to those that needed him the most. He supported his employees and allowed them to follow their dreams, never holding them back. In the 1970s, one by one, Stanley Hirsch would buy a vacant downtown building, move his business in over a weekend, fill the rest of the building with other manufacturers, and then move on to the next building. He and his wife eventually purchased six garment buildings, including the landmark Cooper Building at Ninth and Los Angeles Street. Mr. Hirsch had an undeniable love for Los Angeles and enjoyed giving back to the city that had been so good to him. He served as president of the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles and was publisher of the Jewish Journal. Mr. Hirsch and his wife, Anita, built the Jewish Family Services, a kosher kitchen on Fairfax, which continues to provide meals for thousands of homebound seniors and the ill. He was appointed by Mayor Riordan in 1993 to chair the CRA Board and, as chairman of the Downtown Property Owners Association in 1995, led the efforts to create the Fashion District's Business Improvement District, Los Angeles' first property-based bid that paved the way for bids across the state. I am proud to be naming the intersection of Ninth and Los Angeles after a man that represents the epitome of philanthropy and hard work, coming from having so little to building an empire based on support and determination. Stanley Hirsch is truly someone we owe a great debt to. He helped pave the future of, not only of downtown Los Angeles, but Los Angeles as a whole. Colleagues, I ask that we support this and honor a great man that did much for the city of Los Angeles and downtown LA. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And what I'm going to do to the Hirsch family, I'm going to ask you to just, if you could stay another moment or two, we're going to put this on hold and go directly to Mr. Coretts' presentation. I don't want them to be standing up there. They have live animals, and I think we should be sensitive to that. Mr. Coretts, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we have some impatient puppies up here and some dogs as well. Welcome to World Spay Day, the day when animal lovers all over the planet remind us that spay and neuter is one of the most important tools available to combat pet overpopulation and the various forms of abuse and cruelty that flow naturally from having too many homeless pets in the community. The city of Los Angeles has been one of the country's leaders in prioritizing spay and neuter as a way to reduce euthanasia in our animal shelters and deal with the number of stray animals on the streets of the city. Since the 1970s, the city has tried to increase spay-neuter with its in-shelter clinics and subsidy vouchers. In 2000, we instituted differential dog licensing to incentivize spay and neuter. In 2008, we approved one of the most comprehensive spay-neuter laws in the United States. And all the while, we've been subsidizing thousands of spay-neuter surgeries a year for pets all over parts of LA via contracting with mobile clinics run by dedicated organizations and compassionate vets, and having our own city veterinarians and private veterinarians help out as well. LA ended our version of the debate over whether to require spay-neuter or promote spay and neuter by doing both. And lo and behold, the number of animals killed in our shelters over the last couple decades has dropped from around 70,000 to around 10,000. Clearly, spay and neuter works. It reduces animal cruelty, and spay and neuter saves lives. We're fortunate to have a number of wonderful partners in acknowledging World Spay Day and the effort to reduce the number of homeless animals in Los Angeles. Three of them, Spay for LA, the Amanda Foundation, and the Lucy Pet Foundation have their mobile clinics parked outside on Main Street to show off their contributions to the partnership. You should take a few minutes to go down and tour the clinics when you have a chance. Also, each of these organizations are represented up here with me today, along with our Department of Animal Services and the promoter of World Spay Day, the Humane Society of the United States. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to the Found Animals Organization for their support in providing free and low-cost spay and neuter. And I'd like to ask each of them to say a few words, beginning with our general manager, Brenda Barnett of Animal Services.
You know what? Before, I have a member that would like to say a few words, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you very much, and I really wanted to thank Mr. Coretts for bringing this presentation today. It's so important. I was touring the mobile clinics just prior to this. I want to thank all the nonprofits that have been part of this and coming to City Hall. It's an important issue. I know it's something that people are extremely passionate about because of the issue. And when I dealt with it in the state level, I don't think I saw so many people coming descending on the Capitol. These organizations are often overloaded with animals that are unwanted, and it's sad. And it's important that we take care of our animals. But I also wanted to make sure that folks knew this is also an economic issue, and we need to look at both our passion and our heart and also look at our pocketbooks. LA Animal Services has to spend a lot of its budget just on managing the litters of animals that are unwanted or found. If we took care of our pets, if people stopped giving thousands of dollars to breeders and instead rescued beautiful pets from the shelter or one of these adoption organizations, we could put our tax dollars to all sorts of other uses. And some of the statistics are staggering. Each year in the U.S., approximately 2.7 million animals are euthanized, 1.2 million dogs, 1.4 million cats. Of the dogs entering shelters, almost 35% are adopted, 31 are euthanized, and 26% of the dogs came in as strays or returned to their owners. It's staggering when you realize the numbers. So I just want to add to the presentation, let folks know if you're thinking of getting a pet, adopt one. They're pure breeds, mixed breeds, up for adoption, they need a home. Dispel the myth that you can't get a healthy pet from the shelter. I know my family and I did. We got a rescue dog last year. His name is Brush, and we just, we love him, and he's adorable. I want to thank all of you again for coming together, and Mr. Coretts for continuing to shed light on this important issue. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Bloomingfield, well said. And Mr. Coretts, basically, I will say ditto on that, and I'm proud of you. And it's just always cool to see so many people that genuinely care about our four-legged friends. So just know that I love you all, continue to do the good work. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to echo what Bob just said. In terms of adopt, as hard as it is to go to a shelter sometimes and see so many animals in need, it's kind of heartbreaking. But I urge anyone who's watching this show and who's thinking about involving or including an animal in their lives within their family, please, please, go to a shelter and adopt a shelter animal from one of our seven shelters across the city. I just want to acknowledge you also, Mr. Coretts, for bringing this presentation forward, and you, Brenda Barnett, for all of the work that you've done in reducing the euthanasia rate. But 10,000 is still way too many. We need to get to zero kill, not just no kill, but zero kill across the city of Los Angeles. None of us should rest until we reach that goal. And then lastly, I just want to say that all of the people standing with Councilmember Coretts are doing God's work. You are doing God's work by standing up and advocating for those who have no voice whatsoever. And that's what it's all about, and that's what we all need to get in the game on and really value, treasure, and protect our animal companions. So thank you for this presentation. And Terry Austin, I've known Terry Austin from the Amanda Foundation since the 1990s. So Terry, great work. And Danny Trejo, it's great to have you here in council chambers, a wonderful character actor who's holding one of the recently spayed animals up for adoption. Look at these adorable four puppies. Adopt them. Anyone who's watching, adopt these four puppies, they need a home. Thank you.
All right. You did okay, Mitch. A little more practice, and you did okay. A little more practice than whenever I'm out, you can fill in for me when we try to get the dogs adopted. With that said, I want to defer back to Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for all the dog adoptions that you've done over the years that you've been council president and here on the council. And now I'd like to hear from Brenda Barnett, our director of animal services.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief because I want our partners who do this very important spay-neuter work to have an opportunity to speak. And I just want to say to Councilmember Coretts and the rest of the council, thank you for recognizing what an important social and economic issue we deal with, with companion animals. They're family members, they're loved, and we need to do everything we can for them. And you make it possible for us to do that. And I do believe this is a city of angels, and thank you for your efforts to make it that.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to ask Amy Galbraith on behalf of Found Animals and Spay for LA to say a few words.
Welcome.
Hello, Mr. President and council members. It is an honor to be here as always, and I just want to say how grateful we are to have elected officials in Los Angeles that care about animal welfare in general and spay and neuter in particular. We love working with you. We put about $1 million of funding into the fantastic organizations here today, including Spay for LA. And we've done such a great job in the last 10 years. There's so many more subsidized services available. And for dogs, we're doing really well. We see less and less puppies in the shelter, and when we do see puppies in the shelter, they get adopted, which is fantastic. Unfortunately, our cats and kittens still struggle. And here in the next couple of months, kitten season will be upon us, and shelters and adoption groups and foster programs all over the city will be absolutely flooded with underage baby kittens. And unfortunately, that is still the group of animals that has to be euthanized in our shelter system by the thousands. So of those 10,000 animals that aren't making it out alive yet, about 4,000 of them are underage kittens. So that's where we have a lot more work to do with spay and neuter, and we look forward to doing that. And we're very glad to have Danny here because, you know, it's a great thing to see. We love men who love pets. Let's just say that. And these guys were customers of Spay for LA. They've just been neutered, they're all boys. And for anybody who is interested in adopting these cuties, they will be available for adoption in a couple of days at a adoption shop. So that's where you can come see them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Now I'd like to ask Terry Austin from Amanda Foundation to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Coretts. And we're so lucky that in Los Angeles, we do have a council that does understand the importance that animals are to their families. Councilman Wesson, you were there at the Old South ALA Shelter 10 years ago when we were doing our spay-neuter programs there. And Councilman O'Farrell has always been behind us, and it's really great that you guys support us and realize the importance of it. The spay-neuter programs, they're the best in the country here in LA. Our free programs are unparalleled, and every year they get better and bigger, and we need that continued support so that we can get the word out. Because like most of society's problems, a little education is the cure. And that's what we're trying to do, is get into the communities and educate. The Amanda Foundation has started a new program. We're now doing pop-up wellness clinics. We did one in Councilman Huzar's district, and we did another in Councilman Buscanino's. It was called Wellness and Wags for Watts, where we offered X-rays and dental and blood and work, and we had over 20 volunteer veterinarians and 40 volunteer vet techs. And the reason for that is the intervention to help people to keep their animals from entering the shelter because of medical issues. So when we can be adopting, when we can be spay and neutering, and when we can do intervention, we can solve this problem and be the template and the leader in the country for a shelter that exists to give out licenses and provide training. And that's what our goal is. Thank you.
Well said, by the way. Well said.
And now I'd like to acknowledge from the Lucy Pet Foundation, Doc Halligan, and I believe Joey Herrick will be the one speaking.
I've met some of you. Some of you don't know me. I just want to give you a little background and how animals have really changed my life. I used to own a pet food company, and I used to donate millions of pounds to all the animal rescue groups because when I had my pet food company, I felt that it was the animal rescue people who were going into the shelters. They were taking dogs off death row and finding homes for them. So I donated millions of pounds of food. I sold my company. I didn't have millions of pounds of food anymore, so I decided to, I was going to start a pet foundation and actually have mobile spay and neuter. So to date, I've spent $1.8 million on spay and neuter. And when I first started, I used to drive the bus, and I would go to the shelters, and then I would see what's happening at the shelters. We'd be parked at a shelter for a week, and the influx that was coming in in cardboard boxes, you know, it was hard to handle. I'd actually be driving home and, you know, I'd be crying seeing what's going on because of so many animals. But I'd get home and I'd see my animals, and I knew that I had to continue with this. And I urge all of you to get into the shelters and see what's going on and really realize that the only way to really change anything is to stop the influx. Yes, we can be no-kill. Shelters don't want to, nobody in the shelter system wants to kill animals, but you've got to stop the influx. And so by supporting the spay and neuter that you're doing, thank you so much for doing that. I will continue to support spay and neuter and keep putting money into it, and by all of us uniting with that, we can stop it. So thank you for everything you guys are doing, and also all... And also, all of us here, nobody, I don't make a dollar from this, I put money into it. Everybody behind us, we're all doing this because we love animals and we want to see the euthanasia rates change, and that's what we're all about. And thank you for acknowledging it.
Thank you.
And now we'd like Courtney Fern from the Humane Society to say a few words.
Thank you so much for having us here. I'd like to thank Councilmember Caretz for hosting this great program, and for the organizations that are providing their services today for spay and neutering, the Amanda Foundation, Spay for L.A., and the Lucy Pet Foundation. I just want to thank the council for being so supportive of this very important issue and all of the work that you've been doing to help pets and homeless animals within the city of Los Angeles. So thank you.
And lastly, we'd like to hear from our honored guest, Danny Trejo, who is not only a well-known actor that has appeared a few times here in City Hall before, but now a purveyor of vegan tacos on La Brea.
Yeah, vegan tacos in my district on La Brea and Olympic on the east side of the street, which should be opening soon.
Absolutely. In fact, I want to talk to you after.
Did you catch me?
My name's Danny Trejo. First of all, I want to thank this council for all the work they do. You guys are like unbelie, I've been to cities all over the state, all over the United States, and this is like, this is like the bomb right here. It's like awesome. The work that you do with Spay for L.A., the work that you do with all these organizations, that's what we need. Right now, we just neutered six puppies. That probably, that means that there's going to be like 10,000 puppies that aren't going to be run over or abandoned or euthanized, because these six puppies, they'll have six puppies, and those six puppies will have six puppies. You'd be surprised, puppies are cute, but they get big, and they have puppies. And then all of a sudden, you've got eight puppies in an apartment. So it doesn't work, you know? So I just want to thank you. I want to thank you for all the help you do. And, you know, I'll keep working, and they will too. Thank you so, so much.
Now, thank you. Let's give them all another round of applause.
And as you can see, this is all a great group effort. It takes compassion on behalf of the entire community to make the kind of progress that we're making in Los Angeles, and we should all be very proud of it. But the work never ends. Spay and neuter is the right thing to do, and it's the law. So go forth and stop the multiplication. And I have certificates to present to a few of our guests here. And I will open them up and see which one is which. Start with Danny Trejo.
Thank you.
And Spay for L.A. Humane Society. And let's see if I can read this. Lucy Pet Foundation. And the Amanda Foundation.
Thank you again, all of you, and thank you, Mr. Caretz. Okay, Madam Clerk, can we now go back to item 28? And I'd like to call on, I think it was Mr. Bloomingfield. We're back on, let's wait a second. Okay, now, if we could go back to item 28, I would like to recognize Mr. Bob Bloomingfield.
Great, thank you.
And thank you to the Hirsch family for staying some extra time with us. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for not only staying some extra time, for coming back a second time. I know you were here the last time, so you guys are really dedicated. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Weezer for bringing this motion forward and to underscore how important your father, your grandfather, was to Los Angeles and to the community at large, philanthropy, to the Jewish community. I mean, I can't say it enough. I mean, he was a foundation for the Jewish community, you know, through the Federation, through the Jewish Journal, through helping many, many candidates, including myself. You know, your mother was one of my very first supporters, and I'm extremely grateful for her support and her friendship over all these years. So I just wanted to underscore what Mr. Weezer said, to emphasize how important I think it is and how great it is that we're naming the square after him. That square could be named anywhere in the city. It's appropriate in the Fashion District because of his work as a garment manufacturer, but when it comes to the real estate, when it comes to the impact on the community, and especially on the Jewish community, it's really, his accomplishments, religion, and the mark he's left behind is legendary. So I just wanted to join Mr. Weezer in urging everyone's support for this and to thank you for coming again today.
Okay, Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. I just wanted to echo some of the comments about the contributions of Stanley Hirsch to Southern California in being a trailblazing leader in an industry that Los Angeles continues to really be a dominant force in the world. And it's an area that we have so much opportunity for continued growth and jobs creation, in large measure to the pioneering work that Stanley Hirsch did and the investments that Stanley Hirsch did. But beyond that, as Mr. Bloomingfield has just pointed out, this was a man who was not only a giant in industry, but also someone who had a deep and abiding commitment to community. And that commitment and those values have clearly been passed on to his children. And I want to thank, his legacy continues to go on, not only in his wife Anita, but also in his children, Steve and Elizabeth, who continue to contribute so much in our community and everything that matters in our area of Studio City. They are in some way involved, whether it's caring for the homeless, support for our schools, support for our environment, community improvement, improvement of our quality of life. The Hirsch's have a role. And I just want to say, thank you. It's a real tribute to your father that those values have been passed on to you, and it's a continuing legacy that we all benefit from. So, Mr. Weezer, thank you for this recognition of Stanley Hirsch, and thank you to the Hirsch family for your continuing commitment to Los Angeles.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Okay, Mr. Walsh, please come forward. We're going to do items 34 through 29, or 29 through 34. So come forward, and I'm going to give you your... Act 29, 30, 31, 32, and 34. Come on.
I apologize for taking so long to get up here. I'm a cripple. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential. Item 29, emergency management to work with neighborhood councils to ensure earthquake preparedness. We are totally unprepared for an earthquake. The mayor should be spending every single weekend here working on earthquake preparedness to try to catch the Olympics. But the mayor does not spend every weekend. He spends weekends campaigning for Hillary Clinton.
Let's know, let's stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh.
That's the subject. Number, next issue is item 30, and this is to combat cyber crimes perpetrated in the city. This is the worst victimized city in America for cyber crimes. 11-year-old reasonably intelligent Chinese children in Hong Kong can crack the system open because nobody's interested in anything except being the mayor's pet. Number 31. This is red flag warning from the base of Santa Monica, receive and file, amending the red flag warning to protect numerous substandard streets in these hillside neighborhoods. There is only one way to protect the streets in the hillside, the dead-end streets, because if there's a big fire, they're going to be trapped. They were trapped 30 years ago when we had a big fire, and you've added about twice the development up there. There is only one way to protect these people, and your little red flags aren't going to do it, and that is suspension of all major skyscraper development in L.A., especially in West L.A. and Hollywood. That's the only way you're going to do it. Number 30, number 32 is monetary and enforcement standards regarding registered sex offenders. Well, our problem here is not the registered sex offenders, they're the unregistered sex offenders. And I say it now, and I want one person in this room to say it otherwise. If you're a white woman, if you're a black woman or an Hispanic woman and you get raped, the cops don't give a damn. But if you're white and Jewish on the west side, it becomes the most important reason on earth for it. And nobody deserves less credit for this. All the credit for this is the racist blacks and Hispanics on this board, whose number one job is to watch out for white people. And registered sex offenders, how many registered sex offenders? They never mention how many registered sex offenders there are. And for every registered sex offender, there's 15 or 20 out there raping white women. You don't read about the white and black women as much as white women, and Hispanic and Asian women as much as the others. That is the fact. Next, number 34. This is the vandalism and graffiti trust fund. Well, I don't trust you. Come to Hollywood and see it splattered all over Hollywood Boulevard. It doesn't get wiped out. The only thing that gets wiped out in L.A. are the people from poison SoCal gas. Status of vandalism and graffiti, I can tell you now, trust me, the status of the vandalism is plenty of money and plenty of jobs to sit here in the office and do absolutely nothing. This is the most graffiti-splattered city in the world, and I challenge anybody from the Olympics in Switzerland, where my great-great-grandfather was born, I will challenge any of them to come to Hollywood and be appalled, because when they're brought here, they're brought here by their nose to look around, and they're not shown the graffiti-splattered neighborhoods here. It's vomitous. And of course, none of it on the goddamn West Side.
Whoa, 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 keep it down. Don't break our... Mr. Walsh, do not holler into our equipment, okay? It takes a toll on our translators. All right, Ms. Sernoff, for item 29. Come on. Then we'll vote on these items. No, your card, we started public comment before I got your card. So go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much.
Wait, wait, stop. You are disrupting the meeting. You're just, in fact, sergeants, it's your last warning. You're disrupting the meeting. You do it again, you will be removed. Your card was turned in after I began the public testimony. So I will get you next, but if you speak again, I'll have the sergeants remove you. Okay, remove him. Okay, Ruth, the floor is yours.
I support this motion. I wanted to say that I think the other thing that you have to do in this to make it a viable item is to look into how you would deal with homelessness in event of an earthquake. I think there's a need for a safe place for people that are homeless to go, and there needs to be rescue vehicles and some plan, and a plan that's...
Time out, Ruth. Ruth, hold your time.
Well, wait a minute.
Ruth, hold, oh, Ruth. Just hold one.
Yes, I'm just rep...
No, 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 I'm going to let you, I'm saying, hold your time, I'm going to give it to you. Wait a moment. Sir, you've been removed. Now, you've been removed.
For the record, he is still disrupting the meeting, Mr. President.
Yes. So if we could please remove him. Ruth, just sit tight, we're going to let you say your, get all your time. I just don't want you to be interrupted. Continuing, Mr. City Attorney, to disrupt. Ruth, Ms. Sernoff, go right ahead.
I think among the other things that have to be planned for are things like thermal sleeping bag-type equipment, I don't know what it's called. We need to look into getting some water trucks that would be available, because even in the midst of an earthquake, people have to have water. And we need to have some of these things solved. I was looking at the water trucks going through now in parts of Europe that handle migrants and people that are refugees, and certainly the people that are living now in vans and trucks and trailers and straight on the sidewalk. Some people literally sleep right on the sidewalk with nothing but a blanket. I've seen it myself. And I know that it's difficult, but it really needs to be handled, and there needs to be some public information about that, so we know how, as public citizens, we can help the homeless people that will be in dire stress. And that's true with any El Nino that hits us right in this period. So I just want to urge you to look at extending what you call earthquake preparedness. And I wanted to go also to...
Thank you, thank you. Ruth, we'll call you on the next one. Your time is up on this. Let us prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Madam Clerk, let's move on to item one.
And Madam President, on item one, there are requests to continue 1D, 1E, I, L, P, and AB for three weeks to March 15th. And there's also a... And there's also a request to, for one F to be received and filed inasmuch as the lien has been paid in full.
Without objection, that will be the order. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask on item one, A B, that the late fee be rescinded and the noncompliance fee of $550 be assessed.
Without objection, that will be the order. Madam Clerk, can we move on, move on to cards on item one? First speaker is Juan Alcala, followed by Patricia McAllister for item one.
I object, Your Honor. I was the one, the last one to put in my card, and then asked to speak first. Well, I don't mind. All these liens that you have here create homelessness. You had that group talking for animals. I give millions of dollars to animals. What about people? What about people? Look, you take millions of dollars from people and throw them out on the street. Worse than dogs, worse than puppies. In Mexico, at least we make tacos out of the puppies. But here-
Mr. Alcala, you need to stick to the items.
Here, you protect the animals more than the people. You got people living in jail. There's more jails in the United States than anywhere in the world to take the homeless, which are created by your liens, your stupid liens. They create homelessness. Do you understand, City Attorney? Or do I have to read my li-
Mr. Alcala, you're not on the subject? Thank you, sir. You're not speaking enough.
Homelessness all over the country. It's a very dirty, illegal real estate system and government-operated system that goes against people. We, the people, say that you, the assholes, should be removed from office.
You're not speaking on the subject. Thank you, Mr. Alcala. Please sit down, thank you. Next speaker is Patricia McAllister on item one.
Okay, as you know, I'm a teacher. I had a school certified with the Illinois State Board of Education for 12 years, taught here seven years, LAUSD. I am grading the council members, and I think that you're not qualified and you didn't try to get qualified. Let's talk about these liens. Now, I want to know, I'm on, uh, this lien, Council District 15, the lien is for $314.89. Now, that's in Council District 15. Joe Bustanio, have you contacted this person, Joe Bustanio? I'm talking to you.
Ms. McAllister, you're not to refer to any individual council member, you're to speak to the item, or I'm gonna ask you to sit down.
$89, he needs to visit, or make a call, send someone from his staff over to these people's homes to see why they can't pay this. Now, I went online and looked at these liens. This is outrageous, what you're charging. Noncompliance fees, I see $550. This is for, um, item I, item T, okay? I see $550. Now, late charge, collection fee, 250%? This is usury. $1,375. Accumulated interest, 1% a month. And then the title report fee. So the entire lien is for $2,253.30. Those are just the fees. Now, the person has to spend money to fix up the property. This is ruthless. When we're talking about 250%, we're talking about Jews. Jews created usury. Now, another thing, over here, Harris Dawson. I see people on his, in his, uh, council district, he need to call them, they don't owe that much, and see if they need some help and bring them down here. People, I want you to go online, listen to these meetings, and come down to City Hall with your paperwork. If you do, if you can't afford it, ask your council member to, uh, to, uh, help you out where they can, um, get rid of the lien, uh, the lien altogether or some of the fees. Thank you.
That concludes cards on item one, Madam Clerk.
And Madam President, there's a request to continue one U and one N for three weeks to March 15th.
Okay, without objection, so let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. Okay, let's move on to item 22, called special by Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Madam President. We need to look at other places that drones fly as well. And I've had reports from our Sepulveda Basin Wildlife Area Steering Committee that drones are flying all over the reserve. And at least in one report, a baby great-horned owl was knocked out of its nest and killed. So I'd like to add a friendly amendment that our support for Senator Boxer's bill includes a sentence that reads, "And that no-fly zones for drones include areas designated as wildlife and nature reserves, areas preserves, refuges, national parks, and the like." And so I'd like to add that as, as a friendly amendment, if there's no objection.
Okay, without objection. Let's open the roll, close as amended.
As amended.
Yes. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Okay, let's move on to item 14, Madam Clerk. I understand the, uh, there is an amendment that should have been circulated.
Correct. An amending motion, 14A, has been circulated and is ready for consideration.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. I think that passes. Let's move on to public comment now. John Walsh? Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. You can check out the documents at the LA Weekly. Crime, third worst rise in property crime in America in the top 25 cities, up 54%. But hold on to your hats. Violent crime in LA, Los Angeles City, up 144%. See, you don't have a, a police of, of watching you and guarding you. And the only reaction to this is the sane reaction. So in other words, if you don't get murdered in the street, you'll be poisoned. Your children will be poisoned. As you may know, we have, uh, some of us, not me personally, started a impeachment Krikorian, recall Krikorian. This is, there's plenty of money behind it. This is mostly white people. I just, I should scare you, Paul Krikorian. These are white lawyers of this. HollywoodHighlands.org, recall Krikorian.
Next speaker, Juan Alcala, followed by Patricia McAllister.
I would like to piggyback on what Mr. Walsh said. We have a rising crime because we have a rising homelessness. We have a rising homelessness because the assholes that run real estate are greedy. And they are greedy because we have a money system where we say, "In God we trust. In God we trust my ass." It's all about money. Right, Krikorian? I am a lawyer, so I can get a lot of money. Mr. City Attorney, you became an attorney so you can make a lot of money. It's all about money. Fuck the people. Some even people are saying fuck the police because the police are only protecting the rich. Fuck the whole society. Fuck the whole society.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. Next speaker is Patricia McAllister, followed by Michael Carrion.
I was happy to see the children here today. I did teach children math. Now, here it says, this is a report on the missing persons in the United States. Children and blacks make up a disproportionate percentage of missing persons reported each year. In 2013, people under 18 made up nearly three-quarters of missing persons reported, but only made up 23% of the population. Now, I'm concerned about these homosexuals, gay pedophiles who are kidnapping and raping and killing our children. We need a committee on that. Uh, not a committee on transgenders and all that other crap, but a committee on saving our children. Black children by the thousands, I think 200,000 come up missing. Nobody talks about that. Nothing but these gay homosexual pedophile freaks. We need a committee on, we need a committee on saving our children, and especially black, black children. President Trump, we want you in office. You will get these illegal aliens out of this country.
Next speaker, Mr. Alcala. Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Carrion, followed by Ruth Sernoff.
Yes, my name's Michael Carrion. And, uh, once again, Mr. Weezer got up and left, but his name's up there. So we're all familiar with Mr. Weezer's sexual activities with the secretaries. So what I'm here about is, uh, maybe instead of having sex with the secretaries, he can teach one the difference between a cleanup and a construction zone. But he doesn't have the courage to stand here and face me. That's why he gets up and leaves every time public comment comes up. Yet he leaves so to Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Engelberger, and, uh, you got, they're voting on people, but they're not here. Yet I don't understand how you guys get shit done. We know how Mr. Weezer gets it done. But, uh, the question that I have is, we've already paid for Mr. Weezer's indiscretions. We paid for his drunk driving. We paid for his accidents. How much more are we gonna have to pay for? Thank you.
Next speaker is Ruth Sernoff, followed by Michael Hunt and Oscar Mohammed.
Ruth Sernoff, I want to register my, uh, real concern about, um, the attacks that take place here at this microphone in broadswipes against groups of people, whether it's Jews, homosexual people, um, or people that are migrants and, 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 no, don't think so. I don't want to hear illegal aliens. People struggle and come to another country because of deep problems where they are. Among them, drought, uh, intense violence in many places, and, uh, no future for their children. So I wish to speak to that and also to the Porter Ranch issue, that we need data on water and soil as well as air. It's extremely important. I have a whole file on it. And I wish you would, somebody talk to me about Porter Ranch.
Thank you, Ms. Sernoff. Your time is up. Next speaker is Michael Hunt, followed by Oscar Mohammed and Bill Watkins.
Here's what the Red Chief Hunt has to say. We gave the city a chance to settle out. It's on Fox News. It was on The Times. When it comes past you guys, it'd be another bill for like eight, $900,000 with attorney fees. Don't say we didn't try to handle this the right way. City Attorney doesn't have common sense. I've done this once, I've done this twice. I'm like Muhammad Ali, float like a butterfly and sting like a bee. Can't nobody in the city fuck with me. Fuck the police and them two detectives up there at the Hollywood branch.
Next speaker is Oscar Mohammed, followed by Bill Watkins.
Yeah, I'd like to start off with a joke first, though. It was a track event, and the police was invited to the track event. But the track star came in first, the police came in second, and the bullets came third. We should bridge political responsibility. Uh, I'd like to talk about African-American Muslim in black history. Charles Warren, uh, Robert Warren Seals came from, uh, South Carolina and went to Illinois. He founded the Seals Store. The first Seals Store was in Chicago, Illinois. There was another African-American Muslim man, Andrew Carnegie. He came from Pittsburgh, he started and steals in America. He was the second richest man in America. Him and John Rockefeller conscripted a lot of money to build historic and black colleges down south. But I, I observed to date, there was a lot of homeless people downtown Skid Row. They are not African-American peoples. They should go back to the country they come from. They are not us. They should not be here. We should, uh, but, but there's another comment, this is the last one, though. Roses are red, vials are blue. It's time for us to elect a socialist Jew.
Good morning. Nice to be back, Krikorian. Nice to see you guys. England, Mr. Englander, sorry for that day. I came in and talked on every issue, and it got weird. I learned not to do that. I'm running for mayor next year. I'm in no way, yeah, thanks, uh, no way a Garcetti hater, not even close. Really love what, a lot of what he's done, his energy, getting money from Congress the way he did. There's so many good things he's brought. My budget's a little different. My idea for the budget is 50/50. It's a simple budget, 50% safety or security towards police, better police, non-lethal police, really working on that, foot patrols. And then 50% infrastructure. It's a 50/50. If government, I'm going back to Adams and Jefferson. We've gotten into a lot of things that are not security and they're, they're not infrastructure. The zoo, I can name a bunch, tourist board, cultural affairs, those will be cut. Look forward to talking with you guys and working with you. Kilcedio, how are you doing? Where's my group? Bye, Jose. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes, uh, public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council, council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred.
The discus clear.
Any announcement, members? Uh, seeing no announcements, can we please rise for adjourned motions?
Madam President, today, colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of a dear friend. In fact, I'm sure many here knew and worked for years with Ron. Ron Rogers was a true cowboy and a civic leader here in Los Angeles. Ron was born on September 19th, 1943, the son of a Hollywood public relations giant, Henry Rogers. Despite his dyslexia, Ron demonstrated tenacity and business savvy from an early age, riding in rodeos as a teenager and then buying and selling stallions at 17, starting his own car parking business at 19. Ron worked as a set publicist on television programs such as The Andy Griffith Show, Gunsmoke, and Walt Disney's wonderful World of Color. At the young age of 35, Ron started, started his public relations firm and helped shape the images of Coca-Cola, Honda, Kellogg, and many others. In addition to his business success, Ron played a key role in establishing the Los Angeles Police Foundation and the Los Angeles Fire Department Foundation. Ron also served on the boards of CORO, Southern California, USC, Annenberg School of Communications and Journalism, and the Rate Treatment Center at UCLA Santa Monica Hospitals. While involved in many civic causes here in Los Angeles, Ron's heart was always at the ranch and loved to spend time with his wife, Lisa Speck, among his horses and cattle. Ron passed away last Friday, February 19th, at 72, at his 1,500-acre cattle ranch along with the western slopes of the Rocky Mountains in Colorado. I was in, uh, Ron's office, actually, when he was talking about putting the Fire Department Foundation together and modeling it after what his role was and what he did with getting the Police Foundation off the ground. And, um, he really always had a passion for public safety and public service and put so much time and effort into making sure that we're a better city because of it. Raising money, not only reaching in his own pocket to all his friends and his colleagues, his family, to make sure that they can raise money for additional equipment that our firefighters need, our police officers need. He's a role model where he created those foundations that have now not only helped save countless lives and helped our first responders, but he was always there for anybody who ever needed anything. And, um, a dear friend. He will be missed but remembered. May Ron rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Any other adjourned motions? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Olivia Elizabeth Boston, a community activist and mother and loving wife. She was active in- She was active in the block clubs, community-based organizations, was always available to assist when needed, never said no and always had a welcoming heart. She survived by four children, Durman, Yvette, Medgar, and Cherie. Her husband, Joe Boston, was her childhood sweetheart. They were married for 55 years. And may we, may she rest in peace and we adjourn in the memory of her honor and many contributions to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. This past Monday night, we suffered a very untimely loss out of Judge Daniel Brenner, a recognized expert in communications law, when he was struck by a car on Monday evening near his home in Los Angeles. Judge Brenner was renowned for his sharp legal mind. He earned his bachelor's and master's degree from Stanford and then graduated from Stanford Law School, after which he clerked for U.S. District Court Judge William Byrne Jr. He was a recognized expert in communications and served as a top advisor to two different chairpersons of the FCC during a time of significant change. Governor Brown appointed Brenner to the bench in 2012, after which he presided over a civil courtroom at the Chatsworth Courthouse. At the time of his appointment, Brenner was a partner at Hogan's Levels, an international law firm. He had previously been vice president for 17 years of the Regulatory Department of the National Cable and Telecommunications Association. He also wrote two legal textbooks, served as an adjunct faculty member at Georgetown University Law Center, Washington College of Law at American University, and Cardoza Law School, having previously served as a faculty member at UCLA's Law School and was a lecturer at USC's Gould School of Law. Aside from his work as a judge, Brenner performed stand-up comedy across the country and even taught a comedy class at UCLA Extension. He once said in an interview that lawyers and comedians face similar tasks which were using language to persuade others. The executive director of the Expanding Opportunities for Broadcasters Coalition has said, "Dan Brenner was a treasure, as smart as a whip and funny as hell, a rare, very decent person in not always nice Washington, D.C." Judge Brenner was revered for his sharp legal mind, for being a great friend and for having a great sense of humor. And he'll be missed both professionally and personally. He leaves behind brothers Robert Brenner and Dr. James Brenner, three nephews, and Robert Coontz, his wonderful partner of 20 years. And he'll be greatly missed.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing now, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.